Call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 26, 2018 County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phone. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white binder, and if you need a listening device, Carol is up here in the front and she could help you with that. Move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission minute meeting minutes from June 19, 2018. Motion to approve?
Second.
And motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $855,964.81.
Pay the bills. Second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports and there are none. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. No questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is special commission actions. Carrie, good morning.
Good morning. I have a few special commission action requests for you this morning. The first two involve promotions of our two Planner Ones in the Planning Department. The reason these are showing up as special commission actions versus regular is they're not the latter positions like a deputy state's attorney to a senior deputy state's attorney. Instead, we wait until those individuals are taking on the higher level functions and then request the promotion. Now that they are, we're requesting movement from Planner One to Planner Two, and Scott's here if you have any additional questions.
Okay. Any questions for Scott on this or Carrie?
Make a motion to approve these upgrades. Second.
A motion and a second to approve special actions B one and two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number C is, thank you Carrie. Oh, you're doing this way too. I was gonna say it was DJ doing this one. This is reclassification for highway.
Yes, DJ is here in case you have questions, but this is a fairly straightforward request. We're asking to reclassify the vacant land surveyor position, which is a pay grade 19, to an engineering specialist at a pay grade 17. Very directly, the reason for this request is we've tried recruiting at the higher pay grade level, but haven't found any qualified applicants. So we'd like to lower, put it to a lower level, which we've used as sort of a grow your own program in the past, hope to hire somebody at that level and build them up to be a land surveyor ideally. And DJ is here if you have additional questions.
Any questions for DJ? I think we've talked about this several times.
I'd make a motion to approve with a comment.
Motion and a second, Commissioner Bar.
Just that it's tough to find professionals in some of these specialty fields where there's demand.
If I could add to that comment too, we had a somewhat of a discussion a few weeks ago during the budget hearings about the training for the highway department, and this is an example of where we have to hire at a lower pay grade and spend time and effort sending people to training so we can get them to where we need to. So this is, I think, a great example of where a lot of that time and effort goes.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Did you have a comment, DJ? Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie. Item number six is abatements recommended for approval. Olivia.
Yes, we have two, both for the veteran exemption, 2017 property taxes. The first is RDID 79986 in the amount of $970.06, and the second is RDID 75639 in the amount of $316.22.
Any questions on those?
Motion to approve both.
Second.
And motion and a second to approve veterans' exemptions A and B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is compromise for leasing. There are none. So next, we will move on to opportunity for public comment. If you have anything you would like to speak of that is not on the agenda, give your name and your address and limit your comments to five minutes or less.
Hi, Pam Nelson, and I just wanted to give you a heads up because like all statutes go into effect that were passed last year, July 1, and so one of the bills that passed was 1135, which I gave you a copy of, which basically says that...
1195.
1195, 1195. And basically what it does is it says that people can get a refund if they license something, for non-commercial vehicles, if they license in error. And it's, it's, you have 90 days. So that means that you could go back 90 days as well, so. But it's, then, it, but when you do it, the catch is that you can't have removed your stickers from your registration. So they have to be exactly the way you got them on your registration when you come back to get them for renewal. And not all counties have wheel taxes, but Minnehaha County does. So I guess I was wanting some guidance in what you wanted me to do about refunding the wheel tax, because the state only really talks about their share of the money, not ours. And so I didn't know what you wanted to do, so I thought I would let you give me input when you're ready.
Thank you. I appreciate that law takes effect the 1st of July, and so we will be looking to put that as an agenda item. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will go on to regular business. Item number 10 is a brief presentation by HR Green Incorporated on the upcoming I-90 exchange 387, upcoming exit 387 exchange modification study and environmental review. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is John Wiggand. I noted I'm a consultant project manager on the study with HR Green. Also here on the project team is Becky Baker. She is the environmental task lead for the study. And really just want to take a couple minutes to introduce ourselves, kind of introduce the study just a little bit. The study itself, in its simplest form, is a bridge replacement project for the structure there at exit 387. As you guys know, it's been hit a couple times here in the last five years. Creates a huge inconvenience for the people of Hartford, the surrounding areas, as well as the commercial development, you know, businesses that rely on an open interchange there at exit 387. So, as I said, with that, the simplest form of the study, it is a bridge replacement project, but the DOT also kind of a proactive approach, looking at the entire interchange and corridor extending out from that interchange. We're also looking at improvements there at the interchange and along Western Avenue between Mickelson Road and 261st Street. So, the study itself, we're just, just beginning. Nothing's been developed. We're still gathering information. We have our first public meeting coming up on June 28th at the Hartford, the area fire and rescue station there. Presentation is 6:10. Just for your information, we're also having stakeholder meetings along with these public information meetings. So the first stakeholder meeting, which is really geared towards business owners, property owners along Western Avenue surrounding the interchange, as well as other department officials who will see Hartford. I think the commission's been invited as a stakeholder. And then the developers there around the interchange, that there's a couple big developers own a lot of land that are around the interchange, probably very interested in what's going to happen there. So they've all been invited to kind of a smaller group informal session that afternoon, where we can just have more open discussion, less formal than the presentation that evening. So, the study itself is going to last about a year and a half. We hope to wrap up September 2019. At that time, we would have a preferred interchange improvement option, as well as a preferred corridor improvements there along Western Avenue. That'll also be around the same time we have, or September of 2018, we'll have our second set of public meetings, where we'll be able to present various options for public comments and those sorts of things. So, I guess, are there any questions that you all have for us on anything?
Questions. Commissioner Karski.
The study will take until basically, well, it's already started, I guess, but when would the work be done?
So, the DOT has bridge improvements planned for the project to be let in federal fiscal year 2025. Preceding that, they also have two projects planned to reconstruct I-90 underneath the interchange. Kind of, I'm not sure where the eastern limit is, but then heads all the way west to Humboldt. So those two projects will lead up to the interchange project. So essentially, there'll be work there for three consecutive years, whether it's on the I-90 main line or the interchange itself.
So there'd be a mess there for probably about 2022, huh?
Yeah, so, yeah, starting about 2022, kind of in that timeframe. So yeah, the study itself, it'll be, should be wrapped up into 2019, then the DOT will take it back over and work on the design elements for the next several years after that, so.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Commissioner Bar.
So the damage that's happened to that bridge over the years, it's not, it's still a safe bridge at this point?
Yes, yes. That was something the DOT wanted to make sure and will stress at the public meeting, the stakeholder meetings, that the bridge is safe, that...
You know, if that highway went under Highway 90, then you could have as big a piece of equipment as you want to go on Highway 90, the way it is now. There's always somebody going to have their crane up in the air as they drive down the, you know, their dump truck up or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and on top of that, kind of the interesting thing is that the, the structure right now meets vertical clearance, minimum vertical clearance requirements. It's not a low clearance structure. It just happens to be the lowest structure between the Minnesota State Line and the Montrose Interchange. So just out of coincidence and unfortunate circumstances, that's the one that keeps getting hit.
It weeds out the vehicles that...
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess just to build on that too, that, and one of the things why the DOT, this interchange kind of jumped some other projects because of that, that they, that apparently if it does get hit at the same locations again, it would require emergency repairs, and they'd be looking at partial girdle replacements, which starts to get pretty expensive. So like I said, it is currently safe. It's just that next time if it is hit, that's when things really start to get expensive, and we're looking at long-term closures and those sorts of things, so.
Okay. No more additional questions for John? Thank you, John, for coming. Thank you, Becky, for coming and giving us an update. Item number 11 is authorize the chairman to sign the amendment to extend the food service contract between Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center and the CBM managed contract for one year. Jamie, good morning.
Good morning. Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. This is our annual renewal of the student lunch program contract with our service provider. We're able to renew that four times, and then we have to RFP again. This is our first of four renewals. The price for the meals will be $2.30 is what they're charging us. I'd ask you to approve this contract.
Questions or motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, DJ. Thank you, Jamie. Item number 12 is consider a motion to authorize the highway department to pursue a small claims action to collect costs to repair a side damage at the, as a result of an auto accident. DJ, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothia, Highway Superintendent. On March 20th of this, this spring, there was a young lady driving a car and went off the road in a vehicle, a single vehicle accident, and ran over one of our stop signs. We repaired the stop sign as we're required to do, and, and worked with the reporting officer to send a claim to the reported insurance company. We received notice from GEICO, their, their insurance company, that the vehicle that was involved in the accident was not properly, properly insured, and they denied the claim. And so Sandy's been diligently working to try to get this person that was responsible for the accident and her father to pay the, the amount due to the highway department. She's been unsuccessful in that, and so working with our state's attorney's office, the next remedy for, for this bill is to take them to small claims court. And so we're requesting your authorization to file a small claims suit against both the parties, the daughter and the, the father, for negligent entrustment. And, and if you have any questions, I can try to answer them, or Maggie can probably help out too if it's legal related.
Is there any questions?
Madam Chair, oh, go ahead with Mr. Karski.
Mr. Karski.
The small claims action's going to be against the driver of the vehicle, correct?
It sounds to me like it would be against both of them. Against the father for negligent entrustment, and I don't know what that means.
Okay. Not sure either.
Commissioner Bender.
Order perhaps to drive the vehicle that's not insured. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Commissioner Bender.
I'm curious whether there's been any history. Have we, have we had to do this in the past, to your knowledge?
We pursue these types of invoices on a regular basis, and, and to my knowledge, since I've been here, we have not had to go to small claims court. We've, we have received money either from the insurance company or from the responsible party in every case.
Thank you.
I would concur. I've not seen one before on, on this thing, but I would, you know, driving without insurance, isn't that illegal?
It is.
Okay, report it. The other thing is that I know when there's a missing stop sign, that that's caused fatal accidents in the past. And so I guess that's a concern.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is authorize the chairman to sign construction administrative services agreements between Minnehaha County and the Short Elliott Hendrickson for the 264th Street Bridge Replacement. DJ.
Commissioners, on June 16th, we, we bid this project, and you awarded the contract to Pram Construction. This is a bridge replacement on Spook Road, just to the west of the one that was replaced a couple years ago, and that was also flooded a couple days ago. And so we will plan on replacing this bridge later this summer, into the fall. I think the completion date is November 30th. We've worked with SEH Consulting Firm here in Sioux Falls with the design of the project, and we've worked with them on several projects in the past for construction administration. We solicited this proposal and, and negotiated this proposed agreement for construction administration services and requesting your approval to execute the agreement. And the agreement amount is $70,934.
Questions? Motion? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, DJ. Item number 14 is authorize the chair to sign the contract award to receive the carryover funding amounts from the original RFP number 1057 Crisis Service Grant Program. Erin, good morning.
Good morning. Erin Surska, Minnehaha County Commission Office, and I'm here to ask for approval to sign the attached contract to accept just over the $10,000 in carryover funds. We received, we applied for and received a grant for just around $18,000 for crisis response, which helped out in the planning of our community triage center project. And there was a short drawdown period, and we were very efficient with funding, and we have some to carry over to help with the cost of continuing the project. So I'm asking for this approval, so we can sign the contract and begin spending the carryover down.
Questions or motion?
So Madam Chair, so this is a carryover grant funding that we received, and so what's the status of the project we got the grant for? That's the whole gamut of things that...
Yeah, we'll be doing, for the community triage center project, we received a MacArthur grant that did some funding, and then we also received a state crisis response grant. At the end of July, we'll be presenting a formal presentation of a conceptual report and baseline data report of, of where the project is and specific next steps at the July 25th, 20, 25th Joint City-City Meeting.
Thanks for not spending it all yet. Did we have a motion on this?
No, we don't.
Moved. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Erin. Item number 15 is consider a motion to approve the resolution supporting the public input during open meetings. Carol Muller. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Minnehaha County has a long and proud tradition of having public input at any of their commission meetings. This passed legislative session. House Bill 1172 was passed by the legislature, signed by the governor, takes effect on July 1, which requires time to be reserved to public, for public input for open meetings. The bill impacts boards, commissions, committees, and other groups listed in the resolution that exercise sovereign power derived from state law. A couple of examples where public input would be required in addition to what the county already does would be the Joint City-City Meeting, Building Committee, and the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. There, you have before you a resolution which articulates that we would have public input on those agendas. I will note on there, and if you want me to read it, I certainly can, I will state that when you get to the meat of it, it says, "Whereas an official meeting is any meeting with a quorum of a public body at which official business of that public body is discussed or decided, or public policy is formulated, whether in person or means of teleconference, be it resolved by the Minnehaha County Commission, during any applicable meeting, the chair of the body shall reserve time for public input, determine placement of the public input in the order of business, and time limit of public input in accordance with codified law." So it gives discretion to the chair for placement and time limits.
And we've been doing it here, at this meeting anyway, for quite some time, so.
Forever.
As long as I can remember, forever, so. Any questions for Carol? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion.
I think the only time it was a problem is when I was a candidate and would babble from over there. But I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Did you have the next one? Consider a motion to authorize and approve the chair to sign the easement agreement between Minnehaha County and Century Link.
Thank you, Chairman. As you know, we're building a jail expansion. That project is soon to be getting started, and there is work being done behind the scenes with utilities and easements. Sayre and Associates has been contracted by one of the engineering firms on the jail expansion project for a variety of land use services. Earlier this spring, they contacted the commission office regarding an easement that is being requested on behalf of Century Link. Currently, Century Link has pre-existing buried fiber and cabling underneath a portion of the main county campus where Dakota Avenue has been vacated. Just for those people who may be listening at home, Dakota Avenue used to go all the way, not only just in front of the commission, or the administrative building, but we've turned that into a curve because we put the courthouse up in the 90s. So that's the change that occurred at that time. The state's attorney, state's attorney's office was contacted by the commission office as part of the legal review. Further research by Attorney Weircamp and Sayre and Associates determined that there is no pre-existing easement that was in place by the, with the city of Sioux Falls regarding the original bearing of the cable and fiber under Dakota Avenue. The state's attorney's office drafted the easement regarding jail expansion and parking lot-related construction over the already buried fiber. This easement creates obligations for both the county and Century Link, which is part of what makes this easement different from customary easements that have come before the commission. The easement language Century Link has agreed to and signed includes provisions to allow Minnehaha County to build over the pre-existing buried fiber. Approval of the easement by the commission is necessary for jail expansion construction to proceed. So, we're very appreciative. Attorney Weircamp is here today if you've got any specific questions regarding that easement, and we appreciate the speed at which all parties worked on this.
Questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carol. Item number 17 is consider a motion to approve the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the professional services agreement between Minnehaha County and JLG Architects for the jail expansion.
This is amendment number one that you have brought before you regarding the jail expansion with JLG Architects. And the amendment covers four items. We've revised the timeline as the construction date has moved from July 2018 to August 18. It revises the cost of construction to $41,100,000. It clarifies that the project will have only one bid package, and it revises the professional liabilities for JLG Architects consultants. The revised cost of construction is in accordance with input from the jail expansion leadership team and the building committee. I wanted to talk a little bit about timelines that you're going to see coming before you, because after a long planning session, after a long time of putting together all kinds of documents, there is a full-size plan in my office at this point. If you'd like to go through and see it, I know that I cannot lift those plans because they're very heavy and big. But just to give you a little bit of feel on things, you will see the GMP before you. The last week of July is the goal, or the, one of the last two weeks of July. You will see that in front of you as we work through getting all the final bids together. This is very important. This is the gross maximum price. This is when you're going to be setting and approving the final dollar amount for this particular project. And I fully anticipate that you'll see quite a few of our people who are, we've contracted with, will be present for that as they've been working towards that. We will see, start seeing some utility work out there on August 7th, with, start seeing some actual work, work happening on August 14th. So, we're only moved about a month behind what our original plan was a year ago. We don't think that's too bad, considering these things always have challenges that come forward with them. So with that, would ask the commission to approve amendment number one with JLG.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Karski.
We're revising the cost of the construction. We're increasing it to $41,100,000.
Correct.
Increasing it from what?
It was about $3 million.
Okay.
Commissioner Bender.
A couple of things. One, I don't think you mentioned, but this was approved by our outside legal counsel, so this amendment has been looked at by legal counsel. And the, the pricing that we're approving really is, this is an amendment that just documents what we had decided way back in, I think, November even, through the building committee process. And we've talked about it in the building committee a couple of different times. So it's really not changing anything that we haven't kind of vetted out pretty thoroughly. We just, this is just kind of a technical amendment that we realized that we needed to get done before we get the GMP out, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd also comment again how hard the committee's been working on, especially you, Commissioner Bender, the warden who's sitting over there, and the jail staff, the sheriff, the architects, the construction people have really been working hard. And an example is this Century Link agreement we just came up with, which if we had had to reroute those, those ducts, it would have cost a million dollars. A million dollars. And, you know, we found a way to get that accomplished. I can't believe the phone company worked that quickly to come to an agreement, but having worked there myself. But again, this is just another step in the long trek that we've had accomplishing this, and I really appreciate the hard work of the others on the committee.
Is there a motion?
And make a motion to approve.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carol. Item number 18 is liaison reports. Are there any reports? So yesterday, I went and met with a group of municipalities, and I don't think anybody from Lincoln County was there to start talking about legislative issues that we would be bringing forth together as a group. We did this last year, and we're very successful in having a united front to take our agenda to the legislature. And so we have just started in that process. Again, we had some just draft resolutions that the city has used, and basically ones that they've used from year to year, and then had a discussion about some of the other ones that might possibly come up and make that list. Then it would be the deadline for the South Dakota Association to accept resolutions for law change or to go forward is the end of July, I believe it's July 30th. And then, so those will be submitted to our association, and then the meeting for the SDACC to discuss legislation is the first week in August, and I will be going to peer for that. And the Board of Directors for the Association will be discussing which one to take to our convention, which is in September. The municipal league's convention is in October. And last year, we did try to meet with some legislatures, legislators too, and we probably will attempt to do that again, whether we're doing it. As I talked to Craig yesterday, a little bit about how, as a commission, do we want to meet with legislators to put forth our proposals, and so we had some conversation about that too, about how we would do it, so. Commissioner Karski, did you have a comment?
I had another report also.
Okay, that was it.
Okay. Last Wednesday, we had our, I believe, monthly meeting, I lose track of, the Makeda with the Lincoln County Economic Development, Minnehaha County Economic Development. We had a report from Dean Dizik as the interim president of that, of the Development Foundation, and the changes that are happening and some of the vacancies, and they're, basically, they have hired a new president and CEO for the Development Foundation, a somewhat of a local man, and I left my notes in the vehicle, but been in the region for quite some time and wanted to get back to Sioux Falls for a while, and he's coming basically home, so that's a good thing. So, and there's one other position there on workforce development that's still open, but they wanted to leave that open pending the hire of the new president and CEO. So, just let you know that things are happening there and moving forward.
Additional liaison reports?
Madam Chair, last night, we had a planning commission meeting in this room. It went till, only till 8:30. It, unbelievably, we had one item that we deferred, which was for a bed and breakfast, and so we'll be reviewing that again.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on to new business. Is there any new business? Is there any old business?
Madam Chair, you know, as much as we're all looking at our budget, I would just like to put the word out that I think that we're going to need to do an opt-out in this, in this budget season. Not to, I think, would leave us seriously handicapped as we go forward with our projects that are pending. When you look at our space needs study that requires significant remodeling, when you look at perhaps a chiller over in our power plant on the campus here, and additionally, I think that some of our departments are still short of the resources they need to accomplish their mission. So I'm just throwing it out there that I favor us considering an opt-out as we move ahead of the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Burr. I think this is actually on the agenda next week to have a discussion about that, so, maybe next week. Commissioner Karski?
To add to that, the Financial Action Network, that group of citizen network, or business leaders, financial people, you know, that we put together, and over the course of seven, eight months at many meetings, they had recognized the fact that the way our structure is with revenues, that we would have to opt-out, and that was their advice. And I think the number was, for the next several years was, and it's not like we used it all at once, but upwards of $8 million, so.
Madam Chair, again, with Mr. Karski's comment there, our last opt-out, we, we didn't take it all the first year. We didn't take it all the second year. And now, this third year, we're going to take the full amount, which is the last $600,000. And so, certainly our revenue is up, our expenses are up, and if, if we did opt-out for an amount like recommended by the Financial Action Committee or whatever it is, we would not take it all at once. And, you know, but we do have some capital things coming up, and we do have other operational needs.
There's no comments? Any other old business? Then I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive session immediately following our commission meeting for the purpose of South Dakota法 law 1-25-2, item number three, which is consulting with legal counsel or reviewing communications for legal counsel about proposed or pending legislation or contractual matters. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.